To the November 9th Mount Vernon City School District School Board meeting, please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call. Trustee Kelly.
Here.
Trustee Engenga.
Here.
Trustee Addisobi.
Here.
Trustee Gail.
Here.
Trustee Lensey.
Here.
Trustee Kerwin. Trustee Red.
Present.
Trustee White. President Saunders. Present. We have a forum. Thank you. So we'll go into communications from the public.
There is no legal requirement to recognize public comment at the meetings of the Board of Education. However, the Board recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children, and accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of the board policy. A speaker must register in advance by no later than 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting by contacting the district clerk in person at 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York, by phone at 914-665-5235, or by email. The Board welcomes all respectful comment, whether praise or criticism. However, identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, or other Mount Vernon education official or employee is strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be presented and addressed through proper administrative channels. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. Up to one additional minute may be used for the speaker to summarize and conclude their remarks. If appropriate, board trustee and/or the superintendent or other staff members at the direction of the superintendent may immediately respond to a speaker's remarks.
Our first speaker tonight is Colleen Dixon.
Good evening. So my question is regarding the lack of after-school programs in the schools and how come there are no after-school programs?
Do you want to answer that?
Yes.
Most of the after-school program are going to start after tonight when they are voted on. So all the academic power hour will start next week.
Okay. School starts the same time every year. Like, what is, I don't understand the holdup or the pushback.
We always wait until the first marking period to see what interventions that the kids need, so we, after that, then we can put the right intervention into place. So we always start in October, the beginning of November. So we're a little bit late this year, but we are going to start as soon, because they are going to be voted on tonight, the resolutions.
So who do we reach out to regarding the after-school program?
The principals of this, of the building.
As of tomorrow?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have our next speaker, Darcy Miller, Paula Hendrick, and Meredith. Oh, just the two.
Trustees, good evening. My name is Paul Herrick. I am here on behalf of the Mount Vernon Education Foundation. I am its treasurer, have been since 2008. I'm actually a co-founder. We started the foundation back in 2004 when then-superintendent Brenda Smith brought a lot of energy to it to get it started. I want to bring up a little of the history because not everyone here might even be aware that the foundation exists. It's been around a long time. You know, in 2004, it raised some money. It started doing things to get kids after-school programs and also try to get them out of the neighborhood. When I say out of the neighborhood, take them to the U.N., get them to the Sound Shore to go talk to people from the DEC, which is Department Environmental Conservation, find out about our environment, and just that it is a great big world out there. Trying to get them before the, beyond the four square miles of Mount Vernon. That was one of the mission statements. Anyway, in 2008, we were the lead charity for Save Our Sports, for those who remember that, which was very successful, to save our sports that year. And thereafter, you know, we did things like free book giveaways and backpack giveaways, things like that. More recently, we donated 120 laptops, raised money to donate 120 laptops during the height of COVID, when we needed to enable remote learning and laptops were in great supply, not great supply, and in great demand. More recently, which is what we're here to talk about, is an after-school program, a robotics program for middle school students, which we've started a fundraiser for. We raised over $20,000 at a fundraiser back in September, and Darcy Miller, who's former board member, standing next to me, is going to talk a little bit more about that. But what I wanted to just speak to, because I gave the short history, is that to succeed, this foundation, any foundation, public school foundation, requires the support of the whole community, its educators, its board of trustees, and the entire school board, that is, and the superintendent of schools, and I hope that we can obtain that from you. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Darcy Miller, 101 Brookfield Road. Yeah, so this is very exciting. We got the foundation up and running again right before COVID, and then COVID hit, and before we even had a chance to do a strategic plan, we had a charge to raise money for laptops, which, which we did, which is great. And as Paul mentioned, we were inspired by the robotics program after-school at Trappagin. They did a pilot program a few years ago, and they did a presentation for the board. We were so impressed with that, the board, the foundation board thought that this would be a great way for us to proceed. We discussed it with various people in the administration, and we're moving forward. So we're basically here just to say, A, thank you to the members of community who did support this, because we did raise a lot of money, and we have a lot of interest in people, from people, to raise money going forward. That's number one. Number two, I am going to leave a little flyer regarding the Education Foundation, but I wanted to just say that the plan for the robotics program is to start with a pilot in February. We got a little pushback. We're hoping January, but February, we're working with Dr. Doggett, Dr. Jones, and Dr. Jagnanaden, and they are ordering the modules for the first school. And the first school will be the community school, which is what was recommended for after-school programming to fill in. There will be people there anyway. And we'll be kicking that off with up to 25 sixth, seventh, and eighth graders with a really robust robotics program. So it's very exciting. So the way it works is the foundation raises the money and the district administers the program. So it's basically free money. So you're going to be presented, in our last conversation with Dr. Doggett last week, our understanding is you will be presented, the board will be presented on December 6th with the full plan and with the plan for accepting the donation for the start at Benjamin Turner and for the staff time to run the program after-school. I think it's one day a week. And then the, then the process will unfold, the teacher will be identified, et cetera, et cetera. Then there'll be professional development, which we're also paying for. We're paying for the professional development of the teacher, who will be leading this after-school program, and then we kick off in February. Concurrent with the kickoff, I'm hoping to lean on the PR, the PR resources of the district to do some promotion on this, because we're going to continue to fundraise, to raise the money for the balance of the K-8 schools, the additional 12 schools. We're hoping to roll out to five more schools in the fall of '23, and then the balance in the fall of '24, if all goes well. So that's the plan. I, I hope we will, the foundation will have your support. We're very, very excited about this. And once we go forward from this, we have a lot of ideas we'd like to brainstorm with the board and the administration, you know, beyond the robotics program, but this was just the first opportunity we thought would be great for our young people to have. So that's really it. We're just asking for your support, and we think it's going to be a robust and, and very successful program. Any questions? Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Warren Mitchell? Warren Mitchell? Oh.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board, president, VP not here, trustees, appreciate you, and everybody in the building, our illustrious Dr. B.C. and the cabinet. Thank you. So, couple things. We had a facilities meeting a couple weeks ago, talked about a bunch of things that we have been chasing and drilling down on since last school year and beyond. I leave it to the trustee who is chairing that committee to share that report at his time, but we did cover several things. I will say thank you, Mr. Silver, when he pointed out that Mandela got a new surface for playground. I did go over there and I saw it. It's beautiful, amazing, and I know there was an event that just happened this past weekend there, and it was, had a great turnout. So, moving on to other topics. Okay, so recently, it was very made known, it was made known and questioned publicly about the, the district's involvement with a company called Just Inspire. It's public news, so I can say it. We've been dealing with Just Inspire since at least 2016. There are at least two sitting board members now that resolved for us to pay money to Just Inspire since 2016. I want to explain how grants work. A grant from the state doesn't mean the state gives us money, then we go spend it, and then the state says, okay, great. A grant means district spends its money and supports proof of how they spent it, and then the state approves giving that money back. If you think, and anybody thinks, that the state's going to give us a dime back for money that they can't know for certain was spent correctly, and that there was no things going on, then we should ask the people who know for sure. See, it's always good to ask a good question, and some good questions came out in public through social media and things like that. But were those questions asked to the people who could have asked a question up to five years ago? And why was it decided that it should be shared in public through some, you know, press conference and the ways it did? Things in social media, the questions came out were amazing, they were very valid, but they easily could have been asked to the people in charge. Now, Dr. Hamilton, who was the person who actually was in charge when all of this money was changed, was, you know, being changed hands, he knew about everything. He worked with his cabinet, and he had trust in his cabinet that they were accurate in what they were doing, and as board members, we made our decisions based on what we studied. So, why we're waiting till now to have silence from sitting board members who know that we talked and had information vetted? It was common knowledge that there's no employee of this Mount Vernon City School District that owned Just Inspire, including our superintendent. We know this since 2020. So I'm not certain why it's so silent, it's so quiet now. I don't get it. But make it known, let it be known that since 2020, it was clearly vetted that no board, excuse me, district employee that was being hired at that time was the owner of Just Inspire, nor was our superintendent. It was made very clear, and it was made clear, and it was public, it's public knowledge. So again, when I said a while back, a few weeks ago, to our trustees that are new, don't ask your neighbor, ask your friend, ask the person who runs the show, and that's the district superintendent and her cabinet. Make it known that there are people who would like, from the community, there are community members that would love control of this school district and the school board. So be very careful. This one, a word that I heard of is already known called conjuring. Conjuring up is defined as something that's made to appear almost magically and out of nowhere, knowing and unexpectedly, okay? When you can't get what you want from someone that you're trying to control, then what do you do? You use tactics like intimidation, and I'm going to wrap up in my last minute. You use tactics like intimidation and conjuring of all these things and all these, where did it go? And I want this. Do you really think, again, that the state is going to give us back millions of dollars that were spent if we didn't show every single drop of proof? I can't even get my tax return back right, and I sent them everything except blood samples and fingernail clippings. So you know good and well, when we're talking about millions of dollars for a school district not paid right and used correctly, we're never going to get our money back. And again, if you wanted the answers to how the money was spent and who was giving those services and their credentials, all you ever had to do was come to the people who were running the show then, some of which are still running the show now, and those board members that are currently sitting for the past five-plus years that also were aware that we were dealing with Just Inspire for the purpose of bettering our children's school improvement. So I want to make sure that we always remember, please, I appreciate every last one of my, my board trustees that are sitting up there right now, every last one of you, and I call you mine because you guys are working for my babies, because I have babies in this district right now, okay? So I appreciate your time and your talent, but please make sure you use your time to ask the questions to the people who know the true answers and give you facts. That's it. Good night.
Yurie White?
Good evening, president, vice president, superintendent, Dr. Bennet Conroy, public, and my colleagues. I'm not a speaker, but I'm here to speak tonight. I just want to give acknowledgement first for Mr. Silver and Mr. Stevenson on behalf of the payroll department of trying to help us get these issues straightened out. They have been taking one-on-one appointments with many of the civil service workers to correct the problems that we've been having. So I want to thank them for that. I just want to thank Mr. Silver for over the summer, him getting his jeans on and taking his white shirt off at his air conditioning office, helping to build the grounds department, cleaning basements and moving heavy furniture and books and what have you he had his hands on. And also my director of facilities, Mr. Nabil, that also had hands on all summer, helping us get the buildings prepared and ready for the kids to come into a clean, neat building. Also, I would like to thank Dr. Bennet Conroy for her helping, her support with helping buildings and grounds to get the materials and the things we need so we can get the buildings painted and repaired correctly. And I just want to say, I've been working here going on 30 years and had the experience to work with our superintendent for many years. I don't think we could have picked a better person that's been in education over 25-plus years to lead our kids and our family into the learning, to get the education that they need. A person with passion, love, and caring of the colleagues and the staff and of the people that work underneath her in her cabin. I want to thank the cabin members and the trustees for their support. And the first thing Dr. Bennet Conroy did when she came, our apartment was broken, and she immediately, when the building grounds came to her, to tell her how the families was broken because our hours was changed from 12:00 p.m. to 9:00 o'clock at night, where the single moms and dads could not be home in the evening to watch their kids. Immediately, with no hesitation, she corrected, and we gave her the concerns of that the buildings were not being cleaned correctly, because you only had one person cleaning the building in the morning until 12:00 noon, and then only one or two a night, so we were short-staffed. Immediately, her and Mr. Silver also hired more help, more cleaners, and we also got more painters aboard, we got more maintenance aboard. So this administration and this trustee board has been supporting Civil Service, CSCA, from the time they came into the door. So I want to thank them for their support and helping us to make our schools a cleaner and a safer environment for the staff and for the kids. Now, when we had the pandemic, no one knew what we was going through. So we was told that we were sent to workers. I have the paperwork that we were sent to workers, and we was told that we would be compensated for doing sent-to work. At this time, we have not been compensated for being sent to workers. I know the city of Mount Vernon, the fire department, the police department, the building department have received these funds. So civil service is just looking to be treated fairly. If there is sent-to worker money there for us, we would like to receive it too. CSCA is on their way to a meeting with the board in reference to their contract. So I'm just asking the trustees in the cabin to think about civil service when we come to the table to break bread, that we all can eat fairly and walk away. Because when the dollar store is my favorite. When I used to be going to the dollar store, I would go in and get stuff I don't even need. Now, when I go in the dollar store, I have to pick and choose what I want, because now my check is not even matching up with my groceries. So I just want you guys to be mindful of contract negotiation for us, and just thank you all for all your support that you've been giving us with CSCA and helping us correct all the payroll issues and everything else. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Tyreke Woodson? Tyreke Woodson?
So, good evening, everybody. I'm the county legislator for the city of Mount Vernon. I didn't know I was on the list to speak, but I do want to thank the board of trustees for all that you do, and also our superintendent, Dr. B.C. You got a lot on your plate, but she actually took the time out to tour one of our elementary schools, I believe it was yesterday or two days ago, in the midst of, you know, a lot going on. So again, I'm here to listen. I'm here to learn about how I can be an asset and a resource at the county level. As you all know, we finished Memorial Field after about 15 years of waiting. We got that done, right? And I'm happy to see a lot of youth here, because we got that done for you. You know, I used to be a Mount Vernon Razorback. I used to play on that field. And so we want to obviously support our school district at the county. So again, I'm here as a listener, as a partner, so thank you again. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Cynthia Turnquist? Cynthia Turnquist-Jones.
Good morning, everyone. Well, good morning. All right, guys.
Good evening.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Cynthia Turnquist-Jones, 444 Seneca Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York. It's a pleasure to be here. I had the pleasure of visiting the Edward Williams School Library on Election Day with Westchester County legislator Tyreke Woodson and Dr. Bennet Conroy. Both administrators were also present during the chat about the library. Again, I want to remind you that Williams currently have around 11,445 books in their collection. However, the shelves are overstuffed with results in lost books. That means when there's too many books on the shelf, then there's some books that never gets checked out. This requires the librarian to actually go shelf by shelf and book by book. There are bookshelves that are obstructing the rear of the library to be utilized, so the, the, the bookshelves are too high for if children are on the other side of the library, you will not be able to see them. Computers are present, but they are antiquated. I did not see a printer to go along with the computers. Signs for the walls that will invite students to read a fiction book, a picture book, or a nonfiction book were not present as well. Currently, there is no longer a librarian there. When I was a school board member, there was a librarian there, and she was pregnant at the time. She has since then had the baby, and then she got pregnant again, so she decided to stay home to raise her children. So there is not a librarian at Williams Library. Williams staff, student, and parents are now in need of a librarian and a vision to make sure that the library is ready for classroom visits, parent meetings, professional developments, research, and reading. The principal has a vision to revitalize the Edward Williams School Library. So the connection with Tyreke Woodson, you got to connect, you got to connect people with people that got the money. Are you right? Am I right about that? All right? It's all about the Benjamins, baby. So the principal and the team at the Edward Williams Library cannot carry this staff, this, this task out by themselves. I ask that you join me, as I have been every month consistently, in making sure that the students, parents, and staff of the Edward Williams School are given the opportunity to raise reading scores by erecting a working school library. And if you cannot to join me, make it happen for the children. I just want to add that the Westchester Black Political Caucus will meet next week, and the purpose of us meeting is to make sure that we have funds to make sure that our children have books that are, that are around civics. So that books about voting, books about what propaganda is, books about what facts is versus fiction. And so I end with one more time saying, please join me in making sure that we can assure that Williams School, C.S.U.H. Parker School, Rebecca Turner School, that those schools are part of the race. Because if you walk into Trappagin School, the library is off the rim. You should go check it out. It is a very beautiful place to go to as a child. So we want all the children to have that same kind of opportunity. So I will thank you once more time, and we are going to make sure that this happens. We can only make sure that we make it happen when we do this together. So thank you, and have a great night. Thank you, Dr. B.C.
Mark Stuckey? Call somebody else. He's the last one? No? He said, oh, okay. That ends community comments.
I have a comment to read. As most of us are aware, the Board of Education acted last week to commence an outside review of the district's grant program. This review will be conducted by Serini and Associates, a regional accounting firm. Their job is to examine the district's process for procuring vendors, the awards, and the use of grants, and the district's oversight of the grants, of the programs connected to those grants. Though there is no, there is one particular vendor that is in the initial focus of the review, the board has not ruled out an expansion of the scope of the review. We are doing this because the public confidence in how the district conducts its business is extremely important. Questions have been raised about the programs, and these questions deserve comprehensive answers. The State Education Department has its own process for both the application and monitoring of grants. Despite those processes, the board believes an additional independent analysis should be conducted in the interest of thoroughness and full transparency. That is why we made the decision to hire an outside auditor. We have also recently been made aware of the State Education Department has undertaken a review related to the district's grant-related services and will cooperate fully with this review. We must provide Serini and Associates with the time to carry out what is needed so that the board may proceed in a manner that is grounded in facts and sound professional guidance. Please be assured that both the board will take any and all necessary and appropriate action to the extent warranted based upon the totality of the circumstances. Thank you.
We'll go into committee reports. Superintendent.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And welcome to another superintendent report. This evening, we are going to focus, as usual, on our scholars and our families. But before I do that, let me speak about last week when I went to Denzel Washington School of the Art. They did have a play, and overall, the cast delivered a riveting, stoic, and emotional performance. Hats off to Dr. Collins and her staff, whose time and support were evident in this electrifying performance. We are so proud of our scholars who excelled in the classroom and the theater. So I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you to the staff of Denzel Washington, to the parents, and to the kids as well. So let's get the show. So, let's get the show. Let's get the show on the road. And the show is about our 76 students today who are juniors in our schools but are now college students for the first time. This, of course, is from the Smart Scholars Grant. It's called Early College High School Program. Now, the Mount Vernon City School District Smart Scholars Early College Program provides students with extensive socio-emotional and academic support and preparation for engaging in rigorous academic courses that yield dual credentials for high school and college. The program's target students were traditionally underrepresented in post-secondary education. The dual or concurrent enrollment program serves to increase high school graduation and college completion rates while reducing student tuition costs by a way of compressed timeframe needed to complete a college degree. And I'm going to break this all down for you in a few minutes. On October 4th, 2022, 75 juniors, who comprise the Smart Scholars Program, registered for their first college courses. By the end of their senior year, in addition to their high school diploma, the scholars would have earned 60 college credits. It is my distinct pleasure to present our first cohort of Smart Scholars students. Ladies and gentlemen, together with the Mount Vernon City School District Board of Trustees, cabinet members, administrators, and staff, join me in saluting our committed and diligent scholars. They have made us very proud. Now, this journey has been very tough. They came in as ninth graders. They battled through 10th grade. They came in here in summer, and let me tell you something, those attendance were 100% of these kids coming into these programs. Now they are 10, 11 graders, and now they are on their way to getting their 60 credits to go to college. This is accepted in every college, because you know why? This is a federal government grant, not a New York state grant. So anywhere you go, these credits will be accepted. But to know that the students stuck it out, you know, because it was very hard for them to come in the summer, to do it, to stay after school and do the after-school programs, it was very difficult. And I have to say to the parents who stood beside these children and said, "Well done", because you keep calling me and saying, "So when are we, when are we going to start? It's going to start in summer?" So I have to say that I'm very proud of the principals, of the administrators, and of the teachers who stuck with these kids, the guidance counselors, and the students themselves. When Mercy came down to register them, I went to steam, and I stood there like a proud mother, because when I saw them registering for their college courses, and this one taking this one, and this one taking that, it was a pleasure. And to know that at the end of the two years, the senior year, they will get their 60 credits. Now, this year, the professors will come to them in their building. Next year, they're going to go on campus. So we have to give them that campus life to make them feel like, you know, they are elevated to that, to that level. But I can go on and talk about how happy I am that these students are here, because I want to tell you that I'm so proud of you. And no matter what anybody say, it's all about you, because if you are not successful, then we are not, no matter what anybody say. And one of my students today from one of the K-8 schools, and the theme was that he spoke about, no matter what people say you can do, you just make sure you get it done, because you can do it. And that's from one of the, I mean, K, yes, one of the K-8 students said that. And that was a story that resonated with me, even growing up as a child. I was very, very determined to be a teacher, because when I was growing up as a child, I used to go into the hills and beat the trees and talk to the trees as if they were students. And my mother thinks something was wrong with me, but nothing was wrong with me. I just was just passionate to become an educator. So even though you might not become an educator to all the students here, it's what your dream is going to be, and you are working towards your dream. And to know that you can start college in your third year of college when you leave the high school is a dream for me. So if I have never accomplished anything in my 22, 21 years at Mount Vernon City School District, this for me is an accomplishment, and I'm going to hold on to that, because this is what you guys have been asking for, for a long time. You have been saying, "Challenge me, I'm here." And this is what we are planning to do. And I just don't do it by myself. I have a team of folks, my cabinet, the teachers, the guidance counselors, the principals, they work hard with these kids, and of course, the parents, okay? That's why we focus on families. So tonight, we are going to celebrate you. Despite whatever you might hear or you might see going on, it's about you. It's not about anybody else. And we are going to continue as long as I am here in the school district. This is what I'm here for, and this is what I'm going to continue to do. So I'm like the oak tree. You can break me, you can do everything with me, but as long as my roots are deep in providing something for you, that's all I care about, okay? So what I'm going to ask tonight, so what we have for you tonight is your Pins of Excellence and your Certificate of Excellence. And I am going to ask the schools to stand by school, and the parents are here. I want you to come up here and get the pin and the certificate for, yes, certificate for your child, because I want the parent to give it to their child, because you have been instrumental. Those parents who are not here, I want the principals and the administrators in the building to give it to them, because you know what? You are next to their parents. So it's not Dr. B.C., the superintendent, is going to give it to you, because you have all my blessings, but I want the people who are there for you 24 hours to give that to you, because you know what? Any parent in this audience ought to be proud, and they have been there for you at all times. And we cannot do things and leave the parents out, because they are our partners in everything that we do. So I'm going to start with, which school is that? We're going to start with Denzel Washington. So we have the Board President. You want to come down? Right. And I'm going to call the names, and you're going to have the preparing. So all the Denzel Washington students, please stand. Denzel Washington. And we are asking all the parents of the Denzel Washington to come forward. The parents, if you are here. Are there parents here? No, I didn't call the name yet. So who are the names? All right, so I will start with, is Danielle here? Are you here? No. Right. So you want, you want to take it for Danielle? Come on, come on up. And the pin. And the pin for Danielle. You have Shakil Baxter not here? Chanel Baxter, you're going to take it as well? Okay. Rohe Denton? Najah Diggs. I want to go past Kiara Garcia. Gina Harrison. Brielle Henderson. Sheri Dunheys. Gerald Jado. Amaya Lewis. Castira Male. Massimath Fears. Darnell McGill. Matthew Moore. Jania Morgan. Jonathan Morrison. Kia Page. Charlize Polanco. Olivia Powell. Charlize Polanco. Destiny Ravinal. Joette Rogers. Simone Smith. Alana Strong. And Isis Torres. Look, her mom is over there. Just give her all of those. The next school.
Give her a bunch of pins.
Next school.
Next school.
Next school.
The next school.
Next pile of school right there. Mount Vernon Film Academy. Students, please stand. Rochelle Abreu. Jasmine Aguilera. Uriel Balbuena. Kayla Clark. Deanna Cummings. Marguerite. Gemma. Damari Speral. Emily Galindo. Marcus Hoffman. Camila Taveras. Kyle Mason. Alana Mitchell. Brian Noble. Rachel Diaz. Cavan Palmer. Kimberly. Palomino. Francesca Tavares. Natalie Bellis. Melissa Race. Jaheim Walker. And Iniesta Williams. And the Mount Vernon, the new Mount Vernon High School. And the principal is here. Come on, Miss, come on, come on, Dr. Pierce. Come on. Okay, okay, all right, come on. Come on, come call your students, come on. Come on, right here. Come on. Come on. Call your students.
My glasses.
I don't know if you can read, can you read from that?
I don't know.
Can you read?
Yes, I'll try. Good evening, everyone. Okay, the new Mount Vernon High School, we have David. David's not here? Okay, Cristiani. Crystal. Chris Dilly. Christian. Ebenezer. Julia. Kalil. Adriano. Adriana. Tanila. Jared. Gloria. You're here for Jared? Shadi. Eric. Chassidy. Paris. Justin. Alexis. Ivan. Mariana. Brianna. Brittany. Raymond. Amir. Adean. The new Mount Vernon High School students, please know that we're very proud of you. We're happy to see you building community, cultivating character, and you are excellent.
So now we have been talking, but I need you to hear from the students. So I'm going to ask the trustees to be with me for a few more minutes, so let's hear from the students. Kaija Page? And Charlize Polanco. We'll have them speak. They are from Denzel Washington.
Hi, my name is Kaija Page. I'm a junior and an orchestra major at the Denzel Washington School of the Arts. At my school, we're all a family. The school is a supportive and inclusive environment for everyone who steps foot through the doors. Being surrounded by students and staff who enjoy and are passionate about my same interests is truly an amazing experience. Being allowed to practice and hone in on your craft every day with the help of professionals is truly a blessing. Everyone at our school, from the security officers to the teachers, are so caring and always ready to step in when we need it. All of the staff members are also always ready to talk if we need a moment to talk to them. I also truly enjoy working on the many productions we produce, whether it be a musical production that I'm playing in the pit for, or a seasonal concert for all my majors.
Hi, my name is Charlize Polanco, and I am a visual arts major student at the Denzel Washington School of the Arts. I would like to take a moment to speak about the opportunities afforded to me through the Smart Scholars Program. When I started this program in the ninth grade, I had no idea what to expect. The only information I had was that I would receive an associate's degree after completing the program. I felt optimistic about the program with just that idea. I did not imagine all that would gain so much more. As a visual arts major who had no prior knowledge and was limited to just the artistic vocabulary of color and contrast, I found myself immersed in the realm of music theory, learning arpeggios, and how to respond to what a three-fourths time is. My hands learned how to work with pencil and paper and graduated to piano keys. I find myself enjoying the piano and learning about music. In addition to the arts, we of course focused on academia. In addition to the arts, we of course focused on academics. While strengthening our cognitive and intellectual skills academically, we published a book, The COVID Chronicles, that will soon be published. This program has provided a great educational experience, and I am proud to be one of the great scholars to soon achieve an associate's degree.
Okay, and then we'll have the speakers from STEAM. So you have Alana Mitchell. Alana, you're here. And Williams, Iniesta Williams.
Good night. My name is Iniesta Williams, and I would like to start off with an English assignment we did last night. It was, we're to, like, one of the questions, it was to find the tone of the passage we were reading. And for the tone, I put endeavor. And I think that to be a Smart Scholar student, you have to be endeavoring and always trying to achieve more. And I want to say that we will continue to work hard to uphold our name and our school name. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alana Mitchell, and...
Open to the mic, honey.
All right. Being a Smart Scholar, it's actually gotten harder, like, as the years progress. Like, I thought it was going to get easier, but, like, the courses got significantly harder. And, like, for my freshman year, the courses were, weren't very challenging. But now, since they've gotten more difficult, I've been having more hardship with maintaining my grades. But my guidance counselor, Ms. Martine, she helps me, like, she deals with my personal problems and helps me to stay goal-oriented. And I'd really like to, like, I'm appreciative of her because she, she really just helped me throughout my high school experience. And so, to me, being a Smart Scholar means being resilient, responsible, and self-disciplined. Being in the program has given not only the experience of a college student, but it's also given me a financial advantage and placed me in a position to prosper to my potential as a high school student.
And from Mount Vernon High School, we will have Mr. Budai. Are you in the crowd here? Oh, okay, okay. Hold on. Let me put my glasses on. You see what happens when you don't put your glasses on? Okay, yes, Crystal Budai. Come on, Cris. Crystal Lee. Okay, all right. Yes, Crystal Lee Antonaya Greenaway.
Good evening. My name is Crystal Lee Budai. I was chosen to be a Smart Scholar going into ninth grade. While in the program, the first summer, we worked online doing a lot of fun activities, like the research about young activists. We created a presentation that showcased their achievements and good deeds. The Smart Scholars Program has given me opportunity to earn college credits as well as take IB courses. My mindset has not changed as much as I thought it would because I am still getting the work done and I have always been self-driven to do well in school. Last year was different compared to this year because last year my stress was due to the teachers I had. But this year, my stress is due to the course load, but I am still managing to do my best. Dual enrollment is not as different because I do not feel the pressure as much as my other classmates because I have good time management. Being enrolled in dual enrollment will help me achieve my goals of attending college and it will enhance my resume and my transcript. I have always had excellent time management skills, and because of the high expectations of my teachers, I have become a more efficient student. I also have a good work ethic and I know when to ask, ask for help, whether that's asking my brother or my teachers. They always have my back and my best interest at heart. Because of the Smart Scholar Program, I am more driven to excel and be all that I can be. I am looking forward to going on to college and to spread my wings and soar. I recommend Smart Scholars to every child, every parent, and every school. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Tanala Greenaway. I am a junior at Mount Vernon High School. Also, I am the first generation of Smart Scholars at the Mount Vernon High School, and I am in IB Diploma Program as well. I work, take, I work, take college classes, and I'm about to start playing basketball. You might ask me, how are you able to take college classes and still do what you want? The way I map out everything is quite simple. When I get my free time in school, I do my homework so I can do my other activities after school. I get too overwhelmed sometimes, but if I do, I will either cut out basketball or work because school is very important to me. One thing I would like to include is that when you are a high school student taking college classes, your mindset change. You think about what's important in your responsibilities. These types of classes are different from regular classes because the work is more difficult and you're at a higher level. Also, everything is sped up. When you take regular classes, you really don't have to deal with all of this. You feel less overwhelmed and the expression, and the expectation is not as high. By doing dual enrollment, you are preparing yourself for the future of being ahead of everyone. When you go to college, you are able, when you go to college, you do not have to start from the bottom. You will have a leverage. By having a little bit of a leverage, you can have time to do things that you want, like go out, go out, do activities, and also, it also, oh gosh, sorry. Even though some college universities, some colleges or universities might not take all of your credits, it's still good to have them because you can get out of college and university fast.
Okay, guys, so what we're going to do now, we should give them a big round of applause for everybody. Okay, and I thank all our principals, administrators, and teachers, and parents, and outside organizations who help us, and the Board of Trustees to keep on supporting you. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And with that being said, have a great night, and looking forward to working with you all.
Can I speak, Madam President?
Sure.
Young students, I feel like I'm your parents, and I feel so proud to see 75 children going off to college and saving, you don't know how much you're saving your parents. But I want you to do the best that you can, stay focused, stay on the right path because this, you are next generations, and we're going to look for you to help people like me, seniors. So I, I feel so proud, and I thank Ben the Comrade, Superintendent Ben the Comrade, for securing this kind of scholarship for the young people. So keep up the good work. I love you. If you need any help, I might not be the smartest now, but, but if you need any help, follow directions or need someone to talk to, I'm available. So please, please, stay on that good foot and keep on going.
Thank you, Trustee, I must also say that today, we just got the renewal of the grant for $400,000 for the Smart School.
That's excellent. Does that, does that conclude your committee report?
If you don't have anything else to say, anybody from the, any other trustee?
I can't top what, what Trustee White said because I feel like they're my children, you know? And I'm so proud, and I'm just so proud of them. I really am.
Hold on, let me take this off. Congratulations, everybody. I went to Mount Vernon, all of Mount Vernon schools, Graham, Davis. We were the first eighth graders at Mount Vernon High School, graduated from Mount Vernon High School, and then went off and did some things into the world. But I just want to tell everybody that, you know, stay focused. This is a great city, man. I took, I took, me and a few other guys, a whole lot of other guys, took this city on our backs around the world, and I want y'all to do the same thing. Mount Vernon is strong, we're focused, and we got a lot to see, a lot for the world to see. Y'all take care.
That concludes the superintendent's report. So we're going to go to committee reports, and I'm going to ask Trustee Raynew Adams, if you have anything.
I have no committee report.
You don't have a committee report? Okay. Any topic to discuss, any issues pressing or anything like that? Okay. Trustee Lindsay?
Neither of my committees have met since the last meeting. I can regurgitate the last one, but that's fine. I have met with Ken just to go over different things, and I made a couple of trips to different schools at his advisement just to check on a few different situations that exist.
Trustee Redd, anything?
Nothing because we're meeting on the 14th, I think. This will be my first meeting with the Family and Community Board. But I did go to the New York State School Board Association Conference, and it was a great conference. I thank you guys for sending me there. I really learned a lot. They had some great subject matters, and I'm going to apply it now since I know. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Redd. Trustee Kelly?
Yeah. So as a new board member, I attended also the New York State School Board Association Convention. It was very informative with lots of information to digest. There were seminars on hidden hunger, a film on teenage depression entitled Tough Hope, and a talk by the Education Commissioner, Dr. Roser, and Senior Deputy Commissioner Baldwin. The main topics were school safety, school equity, graduation requirements, career and technical education, and finally, school boards and controversial issues. Can you hear me? There was also award ceremonies. There were also award ceremonies for Teacher, Teacher of the Year. There were 29 resolutions supporting comprehension, comprehensive reform of the state's foundation aid formula. The most inspiring speech was given by Marlee Matlin, one of the youngest winners of the Academy Award in 1986 and the acclaimed film coda from 2021. For those of you who don't know, she's deaf. Her message to school board members was, "We are in a position to help students who face obstacles of all kind." Her philosophy is never let barriers stand in your way. Courage, dreams, success. Have the courage to pursue your dreams, and you and those around you will enjoy the fruits of your success. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we stop for a minute, give these young people and their parents time to leave? Because, go home and do your homework now.
Thank you.
They was inching out of here. They didn't want to make too much noise.
Yeah, so they was inching. Let them go.
That was a good thing. That, that was a very good. That's very good.
And next, next, next semester.
That's going to be fantastic. Oh, I figured that out. It's at home, right? My phone's at home? Okay. And I don't really have a... You don't have a committee report, Trustee White?
No, what I have will be discussing exact.
Okay. Trustee Gail, do you have a committee report? Trustee Gloria? No? Okay, you, you guys are going to merge the policy report, okay?
Okay, so yes, so I have a policy report. The policy committee...
First of all, you guys know how to clean out a room. Look at this. Nobody here. Absolutely no one. Okay. What did you say? What did we say?
We said congratulations. That's what we said. We said congratulations. And that was it. Okay, so the policy committee met, and we discussed ongoing, our ongoing process and how we're going to tackle our policies going forward. Dr. Gaberton and the policy committee, we decided that we are going to, every month, we are going to refresh three policies. Our last committee meeting was last week, and we spoke about refreshing the bullying policy, code of con, code of conduct and ethics, nepotism policy, and the student attendance policy. Dr. Gaberton will be working with Nesbar to format these policies, and also we will be in standards of the Mount Vernon School District. And before we publish the, the policies, our council, council has to approve all policies before they are published. I think that's, that's it for the policy committee. Thank you.
I don't have any, anything to add, but the special education PTA is tomorrow at Benjamin Turner, 6 o'clock. Please, we need 25 interested people. Please come. Okay?
Did we send out a robo-call to all the special ed parents?
That's a good question, Dr. B.C.
We can do that tomorrow.
Okay, that's going to happen. I know the parent liaisons, there was fly, there were backpack flyers sent out, and so at this time, we're just going to get 25 interested people. We need to appoint, or they need to appoint a treasurer, president, vice president, and, and things like that. So I don't have anything else to add as far as committee reports. We can go right on to our resolution. Old business. When I could just do some follow-up. I went to, I went to visit Hamilton School last week, and I saw the fencing that was done. It was almost completed. It looks good. There were some issues with the playground that I hear we're going to get addressed. It was also brought to my attention that, you know, we need cameras in the buildings, and I know all buildings need cameras and updates on cameras. So what do we, is there an ETA on when the cameras will be installed? What's going on with the cameras?
In Mount Vernon High School, 50 have been installed. By November 15th, it's supposed to be 100. So after they finish installing Mount Vernon High School, they're going to do five other schools, and then they go on to the other buildings. So everything has been scheduled. We are running behind time now because, as I said, I told them, if I, if they don't have the 100 installed by the 15th, no paychecks. But I was just kidding when I said that. But they sent an email to me today and said, "We installed 50, we are down to the other 50." So we are keeping a close check on that.
Trustee Raynew had brought to our attention about the monitor outside. If there's any way we could put the board meeting to park in the back, like on the board meeting nights, you know, because people get lost and they don't know where to park. Is that right?
Yeah, like today, they came all to the front and they didn't know to go to the back.
To the back. Yeah, so if you, if you could put that on the sign, that would be the communications person? To put that on the sign, you know, parking in the back for the board meeting at 6:30 or whatever time?
Yeah, okay, we can make that happen.
I have one, I have a question as far as the football team. We have a very nice field at Mount Vernon High School and are our nights playing at Memorial Field? I know we spend a lot of money on Memorial Field, but, and so when they, when people come and they pay to get in, is that money going to the city or is it going to the school district? Yes.
So yeah, again, sorry, Dr. B.C., but from my understanding, the city of Mount Vernon is still working on their game plan and obviously you guys will work, you know, in lockstep with them. As of right now, we're completing the final steps of the skate park. And once that's all complete, we hand the keys over to the city of Mount Vernon and then through the Department of Recreation, you know, all of those particulars will be worked out. But that's, you know, your decision.
So we have a brand-new field at the high school. So why can't we use that field and whatever monies that they're collecting at Memorial Field, is that going into the school district or is it going to the city's pocket?
No, it's for, for the school district. It's $3 per person for the football teams. It goes to the school district.
So the monies that are collected at Memorial Field is coming to the school district?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Yeah, I don't. I'll walk away to the mic now.
Someone asked me and I just thought I'd ask because I didn't know.
Because we use it, the $3 goes towards getting like the guys' helmet and, you know, getting their stuff together.
So why can't we use our own field, though?
Well, and that's something that a conversation I'll have to have with Mr. Semino because he wasn't sure if they were going to go to the field, Memorial Field.
Just a question.
Yes, but we can ask. I can ask.
I'm not going anywhere with it. I just wanted to know.
But I can ask.
I think my opinion is that the big, the big games, New Rochelle and Mount Vernon is one of our biggest games. And I think it's easier for the community to get to Mount Vernon, to Memorial Field. This is only my opinion. To get to Memorial Field than to get to the high school. Because this has always been a rival game. New Rochelle, White Plains.
And Mount Vernon.
Against Mount Vernon. So, but that's my opinion. I don't know. But we do have our own field and it's beautiful and we should be playing on it more.
Okay, and that's a conversation that we could have with Mr. Semino moving forward.
All right, so we're moving on to our resolutions. Any other old business, anyone?
So 5.1, can I have a motion, please, for approval of human resources resolutions 78 certified?
Motion?
I need a second?
I can't see inside this. Is there something wrong? I can't see. Where's my...
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Okay, okay.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
I have a question about one of these resolutions. It's 78 certified. Is that the one we're on?
That's the one we're on.
78 certified? There's a person in here that has, I just have a question as to why, I don't want to mention the name, but they're co-senior class advisor, they're action advisor, and they are yearbook advisor. And they're getting different stipends and I just want to know how that came about. How do you, are they doing something from three to four? What's, what are we paying them to do?
Those resolutions actually come from building principals. Nonetheless, yearbook is an ongoing thing, taking pictures of various activities that happen throughout the school year and putting that together. The treasurer is, all the clubs in the building take the individual's money and does the...
No, it's not a treasurer. It's the yearbook advisor, action.
Action advisor.
What is that?
Action is student government.
And co-senior class advisor?
It sounds like there's two senior class advisors and they're sharing the responsibility of planning the prom and graduation and the various senior activities. So with these, there's no set hours, you know, like academic power hour happens three to four. Class advisors, yearbooks, what else is it doing, student government? Those happen at various hours. Almost always, I felt like.
So they could do it anytime and they just...
They can do it anytime. A lot of stuff may be happening during the school day at lunch. They're teaching craft. They may be planning activities, basics, whatever it is they're doing. It's ongoing.
Okay.
To raise money for school and various activities.
Okay. Yes.
I just wanted to mention that he is our, I feel like if I know who you're talking about, he's our class advisor over there at STEAM. And it kind of looks like a lot, probably on the board docs, but it came to be because our last advisor got pregnant, so he actually took the job over from her this past year. So it happens to be a lot that he's doing now, but yeah, that's not how that worked out originally.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, trustee Adams. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay, and then, so I had sent an email for the Pioneer League. Did someone look into the Pioneer League for special ed?
So that's typically because it is the Special Olympics that typically comes under student services?
Pioneer League is usually a separate resolution that comes under pupil personnel because it's really the Special Olympics.
Okay. No, well, he does, he does games, you know, all year for the kids with special needs. So usually Special Olympics happens around in April and May and the fall, I mean, in the spring. But, you know, I'll follow up on that.
Yeah, it's usually, we looked into it because Dr. Ben Conroy did mention it. So we looked at the historical resolutions for it and it's typically been separate and not under the HR one.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I had.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain? Oppose?
I recuse myself.
Oh, okay. Okay. Motion carries. May I have a motion for 5.2? Approval of human resources resolution 7B? Non-certified?
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Question about one of the resolutions that was changing from a step three to a step one. Was there a reason why and was there any backup to make it, for that change? Can we just table that for the next board meeting?
Oh, that was a typo. The only change that was supposed to happen was the start date. I didn't even pick up that that was started. The change was really supposed to be the start date and not the stepping salary. Is there any way you can fix that while we're live?
Probably not.
If you can copy the salary from salary and stipend, step three on the as it read and paste it into, as it should be, I was only trying to change October 25th to October 31st.
I'm actually not able to go in and change it now, but I can change it.
So can we, can we table that until the next board meeting and then, and there's no action on it? Or, because you can't do it, right?
I can't, I can't do it.
It would have to be either more anyway. Like the whole resolution would have to come along with the others or we just... It's a, it's a, that...
I know the one it is. I know the one it is. Oh, no, what we're doing is changing the date on it, right?
No.
The salary.
The date was changed into step one. If you look at the salary, the second one was an error. I guess they just, when they fixed the date, you see they ended up giving him the same salary as this person right on top. That's what happened. It was a typo.
So can, why don't we come back to that? Can we come back to that?
Sure.
Let me, let me, let me table it.
Do you go through the recipe, take those exact forms at the end of the meeting and then fix it and then vote?
That's fine with me.
If that'll work.
I'm going to do a motion. Can I have a motion to table 5.2?
Motion. Do we already make a motion to put it out there?
I was, I did a motion.
Okay, so I think we have to rescind that motion or somehow... This is why we need our lawyers here.
We have to rescind it first.
Yes, we send that motion.
Vote on it again.
Can I have a, can I rescind 5.2? Okay.
Motion.
Motion to rescind? Okay.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay, motion carries. Can I have a motion to table 5.2?
Motion.
Second, okay. Questions, concerns, discussions?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
Okay, so we're going down to...
Can I have a motion for 6.1? Authorization to create and hire staff for No Place for Hate school teams? Any motion? Who's that?
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. She's not here. Can I have a motion for 6.2? Authorization to hire staff for academic power hour after-school program?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Dr. B.C., hi. So are these just after-school programs or are they just, are they power hour? What are, what are they?
They're after-school programs and they are power hour. They are both.
Both, okay.
After-school.
Okay.
But it is based, it is based on tutora and enrichment.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 6.3? Authorization to pay staff for the 2022, 2023 RTI teams that all cater eight schools?
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
Oh, that was yours?
Right.
Were you even worried?
Can I have a motion for 8.1? Approval of student services, pupil personnel services memorandum number eight dated November 9th, 2022?
Motion.
Uh, is that you? Can I have a second?
Second.
Did you open, oh, is that open?
Yeah, this is open. This one?
Questions, concerns, discussions?
I have a question.
Okay.
This is pupil services?
Yeah. It's W, it starts, I'll tell you in a minute.
W I H D?
Yes, where is that?
Westchester Institute.
No, I read that one. I think it's number three, authorized to enter into agreement with Westchester. Is that the one I'm talking about where it's come, we're paying for, um, I don't know what we're paying for, but I thought that we could have our own people do it to do evaluations. Is that... Oh, she's not here. No, Kim's not here. Oh, never mind. I have to take that up. Can I pull just that one? Because that's, we're paying, we're paying people to do evaluations, working with our students. And I don't know if it's the, the kids that are in hospitals because the pay is quite high.
All right, we'll pull it.
So do I get an answer of, take our own staff do it?
Which one are you pulling?
Three.
Three.
Number three.
The third, the whole, you gotta pull the whole resolution.
Oh, okay.
Oh, this one, Westchester Institute for Human Development?
Yeah.
The whole thing we have to pull. But in one of them, it shows, it's a lot of money that we're going to be paying somebody.
So we can pull it and put it on for the 20 second?
Okay, thank you.
Until you get the answer.
Is that for the entire resolution or just that one?
But, but, but you want to pull that just one?
Aye.
But you have to pull all.
But that's what I'm saying. Well, can't she just fix that so we vote on it after we finish our exec tonight?
No, because I'm, I need some explanation from Kim.
On all of it?
On, yes.
Okay.
Westchester, it's really just number three.
But that's what I'm saying. Can't we vote on the rest of them and then she hold, pull number three? Because we're going to...
They just said we have to pull the whole thing.
Because she's going to fix that other resolution while we're in exec.
Okay, so we'll come back after executive session and then...
But I, we'll, table that to next, on next board meeting.
Pull the whole thing. Pull the whole thing.
Table the whole thing because it's all about Westchester Institute.
Yeah, let's pull the whole thing.
Can I ask a question even though we're tabling it? Because I just have a question and it's nothing to table. I just, number four on that was the authorization of agreement with Horizon Healthcare Staffing, which I totally understand why we have to do that right now. But is there, do all school districts go outside of their district to get, I guess, school nurses and medical staff or do they ever hire in-house people?
Well, what happened, I think, is because we are so short.
Okay.
Nurses.
Okay.
Really, really short. And I think that's why we have to do that because we have a lot of kids who need medication and we don't have anybody to more or less apply those medications.
Do we ever, how do, I guess this is my old, I always just try to hire people in-house because it's better than having outside help because it gives people jobs in a school district. Or can we actively try to recruit?
And that's true.
I'm sure you probably are, but I'm just asking.
And we have. I wish if you could get them. And I'm putting out the word tonight, if there are nurses out there who really wants to come in and, and do the job, then we are fine. But we, we have done that.
And probably get a state pension, I believe.
Oh, I don't know, but that's...
No? There's, there's school district staff.
Well, well, yeah, and that is something that Mr. Silver will take up. I just want the bodies and as long as they are certified. Yes, but we just can't get them, just like we can't get teachers.
Can I have a...
Thank you.
So we're going to pull that anyway?
We're going to pull the whole thing.
So can I have a motion to just, to pull 8.1? I'm going to take it off the table. Motion to pull it.
Yes.
Okay.
Motion.
Okay. And second motion?
Second.
Okay.
Probably not doing this right, but whatever.
No, we are.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to pull 8.1?
Yes. A motion.
All those, questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries to pull.
Madam President, after the resolutions, I did have a committee report. And I wanted to ask some questions. I'm sorry. I know you did. I know why you didn't say anything.
Listen, if I don't write it down...
Even if you write it down, sometimes you just forget.
Can I have a motion for 9.1? Business office authorization to amend the 2021, 2022 adopt budget? I need a motion?
Motion. So he's ready, he's, he's, he's getting ready to speak.
Second motion. Have some reply ready? Okay. Questions, concerns, discussions?
I think Mr. Silver's gonna talk.
Good evening. Each year, at the end of the school year, we use monies that have been put aside by previous boards of education in previous years to pay some of the expenses of our sertioraries that we have every year. So this is, um, just a standard procedure allowing us to use the money that is already in reserve for that purpose. And we're not gonna be using a million dollars, it's about $800,000, which will be taken from reserves each year. When we make a reserve, it's a specific amount of money that applies only to lawsuits from that year. And so this will be from the years 2016 through 2020. And it's about $800,000 that we are taking from money we have already set aside to offset some of the cost of sertioraries. We do not budget for sertioraries because we have no idea what it could be. One year it was $7 million. One year it was just a few hundred thousand dollars, so we do not budget. And when we are, at the end of the year, after the money has been returned to the taxpayers, we take as much as we can from our reserves to offset the cost.
Is that what you, were you explaining that resolution? Is that what you were doing?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Then nobody asked you a question, that's what I was, uh...
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.2? Adopt a Budget Calendar for 2022-2023? Can I have a...
Motion.
You already have those in there.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Can you explain that, um, Mr. Silver?
Sorry. Say it again.
Can you explain the budget, uh, calendar?
So, each year, the state of New York puts out an, a projected budget calendar that we are supposed to follow, all leading up to the election in May, the school board vote and the election. This is also, um, put out by our attorneys. Ingraham and Smith provide a calendar. We put these calendars together and have one master calendar, which we use for a guide for our budget, our budgeting, and then for school board elections, when people have to provide their, um, their documents. And when we choose people and when the election is, the election is set for one day for the entire state. And there's one day for a revote for the entire state should the budget be defeated. After that, we have a contingency budget, which could be no more than the, uh, current budget.
Did you? Yep. Okay, right. So, can I have a motion for 9.3? Approved Claims Auditors Report, July, August, and September, 2022? That was, uh...
The budget, the budget calendar.
I think there was another calendar.
No, we, we, um, did we do that one?
We didn't do 9.4, did you?
No, I didn't do 9.4. We were 9.3. We, we voted on the other one.
Oh, the claims, okay.
Yeah.
Just on the calendar.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Silver, I had some questions about the Claims Auditor Report. So are we gonna vote on it before we get the questions answered?
Do you want a resolution first before I respond to that, or no?
The Claims, the Claims Auditor Report.
9.3.
That was the calendar we were addressing, which is 9.2?
Right.
You have to vote on 9.2.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we did. Yeah, we did. We just did.
Finished 9.2.
We finished 9.2.
Okay.
You guys voted on two. But then I think you asked a question after. On 9.2.
We did not vote on the calendar. All right, so let's go to 9.2.
So let's, let's do the calendar again.
Okay.
We didn't call it calendar.
Do the calendar.
Do it over.
So, can I have, um, motion for 9.2? Adopt a Budget Calendar?
Motion.
Second. The second.
That's where it stopped.
Question, concerns, discussion?
Give me a second. Do me a second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain?
I'm sorry, Rita, did we second that one? Did you hear a second on that?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I didn't hear it. Okay, sorry.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.3? Approved Claims Auditors Report, July, August, and September, 2022?
Motion. Second.
Okay? All right, and the first one?
I think I said it. Didn't matter. So, Mr. Silver, yeah?
Yes, so, um, President Saunders met with me with the internal claims auditor yesterday. Um, and she was, she had said that she wanted to respond to the questions that were posed by President Saunders to me and the board copied on, having to do with the three internal claims audit reports. And she was not able to provide that prior to this meeting. She will have that finished tomorrow morning. Uh, and we spoke about, Superintendent and I spoke about, should we pull that or just leave it alone? And we decided that we should leave it alone for you to decide whether you want to approve it now, or we can pull it and approve it at the next meeting, when you will have the responses to the questions.
If there are questions, we should pull it.
Yeah, I, I think I want the answers to the questions before, I would like the answers to the questions before I vote on it. I mean, I don't...
There's, there's no timeframe in terms of approving those.
All right, so can we, I, I wanna pull it.
Sure.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
For 9.3? To pull Approved Claims Auditors Report, July, August, and September, 2022?
Motion.
Motion?
Second.
Can I have a motion? All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay, motion carries. Can I have a motion to table 9.3? Approved Claims Auditors Report, July, August, and September, 2022?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.4? Authorization to approve a transfer of a million dollars from capital?
Would these? I have a question.
Motion.
Motion? Who's, I need...
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Can I comment on this?
Yes, I was just about to ask you to comment on this.
Sure. So each year, not each year, this year, we were able to put $2.1 million into the budget for specific capital projects that we wanted to do. That finalized in March. We did not know we had all the issues that we had at that time. Because of the playground repairs, the fire escapes, the electrical repairs, and other things, we simply did not have enough money in the repair part of the budget to take care of these massive extra expenses that we had. So we spoke to the auditors and they said that this procedure would allow us to take money from what we had planned to do for capital projects and put it into repairs and defer these repairs until a later time, or this board could rule on whether they want to do some on the, some of these repairs next year or not. This resolution, I chose what I thought would be good things to take from the capital fund to put into repairs. One of the items, a third of it, $350,000, is for the oil tank removal. We already know that we don't need that because it's going to be paid for out of the 2016 bond, from the remainder of the proceeds of the bond. All the other items, I chose because I thought they would be appropriate to defer. Like a new tile floor in the auditorium at Rebecca Turner, replacing the carpet. It could wait a year. Rekeying Mount Vernon High School for $250,000, it would be nice to do it, but all 16 buildings need to be rekeyed. So I chose these items. I'm happy to look at other items. This resolution does not, uh, commit us to remove particular items from, from the capital projects and put them in repairs. It's just a sampling. So we have, um, we're, so we're planning to leave 1.1 million for capital projects. We're still hoping to do those. But we wanted to move this million dollars so that we could cover all these expenses that we had not anticipated when the budget was completed in March.
This is, I had a question about the, um, upgrade of the science rooms in Mount Vernon High School. Is, you're, you're gonna delay those? Is that was, that's on, in the blue type? Is, you'll postpone that one?
What?
For the upgrade of the science...
Yeah, I'm just, I'm trying to find it.
Sorry, it's the last one, item in the blue type, under, uh, specifics of transfer to capital.
I'm asking...
That was what I suggested at this time, but there's the whole list of another 1.1 million dollars that we can choose from. And again, this resolution does not commit us to take these things out of one thing and do another. There are lots of other things we could choose from, and I'm happy to provide the board with a whole list, but we needed to get the commitment to move the money so we could pay for these repairs. So, again, we're not committed to these items. It doesn't have to be that. It could be painting hallways that we, that we, uh, do at a later time. Could be a lot of different things.
So where'd you get these estimates from?
These estimates were provided by our architect and they were part of the existing budget. It's, it's the last page of, next to last page of the budget, has these, all these items listed specifically, a dollar figure, and a building that it's to be taken place.
And these jobs have been bid already?
They, they have not been, no.
Okay, I just wanted to...
No.
So you understand, so it's an estimate of cost?
That, they're estimates of cost, yes.
So I have a question, um, Mr. Silver. The fire escape repair and replacement, those were already...
The fire escapes are finished. All the fire escapes are safe.
So, this, this amount here is to...
Well, we used up all the money in our repairs just for this, just for these, those few things. So we have no money to do all the other repairs that we don't know about or may know about for the balance of the year through June 30th. And so we're, this purpose of this is to replenish what we don't have. So should these monies not be used, they will go into fund balance at the end of the year.
Yeah, I, yeah, I understand, but I'm saying the fire escape is here. Is that money already, already paid the contractors for the fire escape and the repairs? Because it's also here that the allocation of the million dollars.
I don't, I don't, I don't know what you're...
The second, is the second Bullet Island Down Fire Escape Repair and Replacement, $330,000?
Lauren, you're just asking, is the work already done? Yeah, that's, just asking if the work is already done.
Oh, yes. The, the, uh...
But you have it here to get done, is what she's saying.
The, the top part of the resolution is what we are doing and what we estimate the cost will be. The bottom part is to recover the money. So the fire escapes are done. We've paid well over $330,000 for all those repairs. But remember, there's also fencing repairs, which are kind of mixed in. But the top part is not what we're proposing to do, it's what we have done. The bottom part is where we're getting the extra money to pay for the things we've already done.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't follow what you were asking.
I just have one question on the fire escape at Williams. Half of it was painted and the other half wasn't?
The, the, um, handrails were painted on the fire escapes so that nobody, we, we painted portions of the fire escape that were more for what the kids would touch should there be, uh, need to use the fire escape to get out of the building. We didn't plan to paint the entire fire escape because one of those fire escapes, we are told, is only good for a year or two. This was just a repair. And so we wanted to limit what we needed to do to make it safe for this period of time. We will not be using the fire escape people's, uh, opinion about whether we replace it. Our structural engineers will be saying how long these fire escapes can last. Now they're safe, but we did a minimum of painting of the fire escapes. Because some of those fire escapes are 40, 50 years old. But you can't replace a fire escape during the school year. It has to be done during the summer. You can't do it when the kids are in the building or when school's in session. So the only choice was to fix the fire escapes. I think trustee Kerwin saw that one with me. And you had mentioned, why didn't we paint the, the extra part of it? And so we did paint some extra. But the most important thing in there, besides the stairs being safe, was that we provided panic bars so that when you get to the bottom of the fire escape, you can actually get out.
I'm just, my understanding that, based on how it is now, it's expected to only last a year?
There's only two fire escapes that are going to have to be replaced in the next few years. All the others are safe for a good, long period of time. We don't know what that is yet, but the structural engineers will evaluate it.
So what, two?
Only, only two. One at Williams and I think one at Graham. I'm not, I'm not sure of what the other one was.
Yeah, Graham wasn't too hot.
When will the structural engineers, um, sorry, uh, complete their report? Sorry.
Well, r, right now, we're, are you talking about the fire escapes?
Yeah.
So, right now, they've, they've just finished their report on the Williams School. They have to do the Columbus School. They have, um, there's an issue at Lincoln School, having to do with the bricks and the outside of the building. And, um, they had something at Graham School on a ceiling that there was a, a concern, and then they will get to the fire escapes. Right now, we've been assured the fire escapes are safe and we will be doing a, a study of that, too. Remember these buildings, some of them are 90 years old? Or, or in, in progress to be done. So we haven't finished the playgrounds, we finished the fire escapes. The electrical work is ongoing. Uh, what's happening is we're replacing, uh, emergency exit lights in all the buildings with lights that tell you when they need to be replaced, when the batteries need to that tell you when they need to be replaced, when the batteries need to be, instead of requiring somebody to do something each month to test it out. And sometimes that gets forgotten. These new lights will not have that requirement. We, we do not, we have the report from the engineers that there has to be several beams put in, not replacing beams, but adding to existing beams. Several, I think three of our trustees saw that. We, I had expected a price on that today, but I just don't, I do not have it yet from the contractor. But we know what we need to do. They've done a lengthy report, and there's a second report which details what the fix is with drawings and how it has to be done. And the engineer is working with the contractor to come up with an agreed-upon method and price. And I will, I will probably have that tomorrow, but certainly at the next board meeting, I'll be able to report on that.
We have the one point-
Look like a million be enough.
Well, he say he has the 1.5 left over.
Yes, we still have another 1.1 million dollars. And that will be, that will be the final, the, the repair of the Williams Building will be the final thing that we think we need to do now in terms of anything that's expensive. Yep.
And at least, and at least we have something in there in case we-
Yes, we do.
One other question. The elevator, I'm back on the elevator. Been out for the last six years.
So that is what's called the handicap lift. And the, that, the plans to do that were more stringent than we had thought at some time in the past. The state is, is requiring us to have a permit, or they will provide us with a permit, but there are certain things that they want us to do beyond just replacing the cab in the elevator shaft. There are other changes to the fire code, to the safety codes, which force us to change some of the structure of the elevator enclosure. And that's what we have to get the permit for. But we're hopeful, next meeting I'll have a report on that. I should be able to give a definite time as to when it'll be finished.
If that's necessary, especially if you have a handicapped child that's in a wheelchair or a, using a walker or something.
That's correct. This, so-
Need to have that-
So that's a lift, but there's also an elevator, so.
But also with that elevator, though, is there something that can be done temporarily? Because it's my understanding that a youngster was pulling on that door, and had he had more strength and opened it, it's just the open shaft that would be there.
Yes, since our conversation earlier tonight, I've already contacted the building head custodian. He's going to be reporting on that tomorrow to me. I'll be over there anyway tomorrow to look at it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 9.5, approved general funds transfer, 2022-2023, November 9th, 2022.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
I have a question about, I didn't read it fully, but something about the superintendent designee is authorized to make budget transfer without prior board approval. What's that?
So we, we are permitted under the policies of the board and guidance from the state to make transfers up to $10,000 from any code to any code. The only prohibition is that money cannot be transferred into furniture. It could be transferred from furniture to anything else, but no money can go into furniture. And also, the other exception is that any salary transfers that we need, so if a teacher moves from one place to another, we need to balance the salaries, those do not require board approval. All other transfers over $10,000 do require board approval. And that, that board approval can come right afterwards if there's an emergency need to do something, it would be on at the next meeting.
So, but you're asking for board approval here?
Yes. Both of those are over $10,000, so yes, we're asking for board approval.
Oh, it's 50,000, okay. Okay. 50,000, all right. So we have a motion on-
So it's individual transfers, not the totality of the, of the request.
Motion on the floor?
Yeah, motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 9.6, reject all bids for RFP number 2022-2302. Third-party consultant services pre-kindergarten to re-advertise in the best interest of the district.
So what's, motion?
Okay, I need the second.
Can you explain this?
Dr. White Wallace will explain this.
Good evening, everyone.
Aye.
So, this the interest of the teaching department, the NICEDIT office of early learning requires that we have certain assessments and tools done on our classrooms. So there are two different types of assessments, the T-POT and the CLASS. These three are done by outside evaluators who come in, and one is the T-POT to measure the students' teacher interaction in the classroom, classroom kind of open. We've been, one third party person who's actually trained by NICEDIT, who comes in and observes all 24 of our classrooms. We also then engage in the class assessment. We don't do these every year, we do them upon every other or every two years. The class assessment looks at EQUERS, which is classroom environment, as well as instruction and the other domain. These people who come in, they will observe the classrooms, they will give us a measure and give us a report, and then it is actionable for me to follow up. So we've put out a bid for people to do the CLASS and the T-POT. We received one that was hand-delivered instead of mailed, so it was disqualified. And the other did not respond appropriately. The one person who did respond for the CLASS, instead of giving us options to have the class done, they sent us options to buy their tools for the CLASS. So they didn't answer the bid the way we needed it to. So I would like to reject the bid, put the bid out again so that we can get the appropriate vendors to do these assessments. Once these assessments are done, we will meet with teachers, and we will provide the board with a, a full report on what's being observed, and it is impartial because it is someone who is not, um, supposed to or part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 9.7, auction services, Mount Vernon City School District.
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Can this, uh, does this specific resolution have anything to do with the room over at Mount Vernon High School that we've been talking about?
Only that room.
Okay. Did we, can I ask if we found out any other uses for any of the tools in there?
So trustee Lancy is referring to the, what was the old machine shop that we have been asked for a long time to try to do something to clean out the room, to try to make it at least empty so that we could determine, could we use that room for something else? And in that room are maybe 20 or 30 heavy pieces of metal working machinery that are perhaps 40 or 50 years old. We believe those machines all work, but they do not meet today's safety standards for a school. When they were used back in the 60s, they met the standards. They have changed. We can't use that machinery anymore. This resolution will allow us to have an auction house come in. They're going to tag every piece of machinery, and there's going to be an auction that they will hell, they will hold right at the high school. The people buying it will have to pay on, they will, they will remove the equipment, and the auction people get 10% of whatever we sell it for. Some of this machinery weighs 3,000 or 4,000 pounds apiece. It will be very difficult to get out, but it can get out. The objective that several trustees have asked about is to do something with that room. One of the problems with that room is that the HVAC system has, is filled with metal particles from the time when it was used as a metal shop. And there was an evacuation system which pulled metal filings out. We don't know if that can ever be used again. It may have to be replaced as well. But it's a huge room, and we could do so much stuff for the kids in that room, but we can't even imagine what it could be like until we can get everything out of there. We have tried for, I believe, almost a year, but one of the people who is assisting us with facilities worked in the Millbrook Schools, he's retired from there, and he had this auction house work for him in the Millbrook Schools, and they sold a lot of equipment at that time. So he was able to find somebody. We have not been able to on our own.
So we didn't put up any RFPs or anything for this? Do we have to?
We do.
For the auction house?
You know, I don't know the answer to that.
I guess my, my only observation on it was, I spoke to some people within the district who used to teach vocational training here up until the 90s, and they still teach a little bit of it, and they were saying that a lot of, at least some of the machines can be repurposed within the district. And the other thing, one thing that he did bring up in particular was the CNC router that's in there that is a rather expensive computer router that is, probably could be used in various places in our school district, because it's, I guess it would be the precursor to a 3D printer type of a thing. You can cut and make anything with a CNC router.
So are we saving some pieces of it?
So what trustee Lancy just mentioned could conceivably be used in the, in the purpose that we've been talking about, having to do with vocational program, having to do with Scarsdale High School that we were talking about, conceivably. So we did go to the auto shop people, and we went to other people who were involved in vocational programs, had them come in there, and several of those pieces will be moved to be repurposed within the school district, but we can't move them until we get other things out.
So those were identified, is that correct?
Yes, they have been identified. But they won't be going, they'll be staying here.
Question, when they auction all the equipment out, who cleans up that room?
Well, we already did one preliminary cleaning, but that room actually looks like everybody just was lifted straight up off the floor and out of the room, and everything stayed there.
Coffee cups from 20 years ago?
So, so we will be cleaning the room whenever, when it's empty. There'll be no, our people have done it before, and they'll do it again. And there's also an adjoining room, which some of you may have seen, which needs to be emptied, and has been partially emptied with the help of Ms. Len Sarver, who's in the electrical business, and, and helped us to determine what lights could be thrown out and what, that were just scrap and what we needed to keep. And there's a lot of things in this other room, but we'll get to that when we get the first room emptied.
So if that's the case, or isn't, um, all of that equipment should have been inventoried. If we threw something out, we should have inventoried that, you know, that is coming in or going out?
So the auction people are going to inventory them?
No, the ones that you said Sarver threw out or got rid of.
It was, it was just scrap metal. It was, it was, it was, it was nothing. It was, it was junk lights that had, that had been used and it was just stuck there.
So, because I know I saw barcodes on some of that stuff.
Not, not those lights.
The ones that's in this other room, yeah, okay.
No, the, the, those things did not have, there's a lot of stuff, I know what you're referring to, but these were lights that were taken out of the ceilings and just stuck in, in that room.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 10.1, approve resolution 10.2 through 10.9 on matters pertaining to the 2023 school budget vote and trustee election. Motion. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay. Motion carries.
So before we conclude and go into exact, trustee White has to, has a question for, about HR. I had been talking to different people around the district. As a former teacher, people call me all the time about anything. So, but some of the questions I have been getting that a lot of our buildings are not staffed right as far as cleaners, that we need more cleaners per square footage, per building. Ms. Higgs?
Yes.
I'm sorry. So we were wondering why aren't these cleaners hired? Because a lot of, I talked to some of the head custodians, and most of them said, oh, we need one person, we need three people, or.
So, I just signed off on a posting today for 10 more cleaners.
Thank you.
So it's going down to HR tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. That settles that.
Exactly.
So there were some positions open, I think, for cleaners before, so, and they applied. I think I had a conversation with you before, right? They applied, but they never got called. So are we going to go back into the old applicants?
So-
Those positions that you just opened? How does that work?
They're, they're actually, until these 10 came, because I did a reconciliation of all positions a couple of weeks ago, and so based on the budget projection for staffing that was done in the spring, that, we have the exact number, actually a few more, remember BCA said, than what's on the budget. I personally don't know how to, and it's not out of HR, to determine how many per building. As Dr. Benet Conroy said, she opened the positions, which must be based on the recommendation of Kinzler and/or B&amp;G. What we do in HR is we process the recommendations to hire. There were no vacancies for a while. There were some transfers done that created vacancies in various buildings, which conceivably created additional vacancies in the district, hence Dr. Benet Conroy, which I did not get it, she said it's coming to HR tomorrow. The positions for the people that were recommended in the summer, they were called. I only received recommendations to hire per diem cleaners. If you recall, and I only know this because I asked about two yesterday in my office, on the September 7th resolution, three went through at that time, the, there were some who had, um, their pre-screening wasn't all the way clear yet. And so we were not putting them on the resolution as a per diem cleaner until their pre-screening was cleared. So they weren't hired for actual, they weren't recommendations for positions per se. When people recommend, when people apply for a position on OLA or using a posting response, the administrator that has the vacancy is the one who goes through them. They call them in, they interview for their buildings. If it's the principal, they're asked to work with B&amp;G. They interview by compact. They then say, these are the candidates we want, and they send their recommendations to HR, and then I meet with them, I offer them the salary, my office does the pre-screening. I don't look at every response to every posting for every position because a principal needs to find the person that's a good fit for their building, that they feel that they can supervise and manage. So I'm the last one at the chain, is what I'm saying. So there were no recommendations that were sent to HR this summer for full-time positions that were disregarded. As I said, there's some that are still pending pre-screening, which sometimes for some people takes longer than others.
So I, I guess it's, I don't know, if, if building and grounds needs cleaners or painters, whatever, it seems as though buildings and grounds should be doing the, the reviewing, the, the, the application or the interviews in addition with the principals.
Right, that's what I said, it's not-
I understand why the principals have the, have, do, do the whole thing and then invite buildings and ground.
Buildings and ground, so it depends. If it's a painter, if it is maintenance mechanic, maintenance carpenter, the people work, that work out of the B&amp;G office here. Buildings and grounds, the director of facilities, is to conduct those compacts. If it is in a building, the principal, in collaboration with Buildings and Grounds, the director, should conduct the compacts together, not in isolation. If we appoint someone to a principal's building, and I'm like, here, you're going to take Marcy, Marcy's going to be your cleaner, when, you know, principal Kerwin says, Marcy, I don't want Marcy in my building, she's going to call me and tell me, get her out. But if principal Kerwin interviewed and helped select Marcy, then she's responsible and she's accountable for the collaborative supervision of Marcy. She will then write me up, she will then meet with me, but if we just put people in people's buildings, they're going to call us to get them out, and we're not going to be able to move people every time someone wants out. So on top of that, it is in the CSEA contract that states that there must be a building level compact. It's, that's the one contract where it says specifically, there must be a building level compact.
And I need to add to that, that when I came in the position, I got a lot of requests from principals in their buildings that they want cleaners, they want all kind of folks. So what I had to do, I had, I met with Mr. Silver and Mr. Boches, and discuss the, the vacancies that people are asking for, or the new positions that people are asking for. And then I also spoke to the principals and then made that decision. So that is why I'm going to do a posting for 10 cleaners, because we really needed those positions in, in the district. It's need, it's necessary. And if they are going to keep the buildings clean and maintain them as how I want it to be done, or it should be done for the kids, then we definitely have to hire more cleaners. That's one. We also need more painters.
I was giving this, I was finding-
Because I, right, yes, because I know the few painters that we have is overworked, and I know they have been very nice to me, especially, um, what's his name, Yuri's brother, what's his name? Reagan, Reagan. Right. And I'm telling you, he ran over here every time I said, I want you to paint here, I want you to go there, go here. He's just moving just like, like a yo-yo to get the stuff done because he wants to, he knows I'm going to keep asking him every day if you, if you have been to Park or if you have been to this place. So he's just been very nice and how I, how I treat people with respect, he want to do that for me as well. do that for me as well. So, with that being said, we needed more painters.
How many more painters are you getting?
Well, that is a conversation I'm going to have with, with, with Mr. Silver, because I have to look on the money that is there. It all depends on the money.
That's right.
Okay. So, but I know we needed more painters. We also need more, um, groundsman. Is groundsman? Okay, yes. And because we can't wait until summer, when all the trees start growing and the squirrels start coming out, and the neighbors start calling us to get the grounds cleaned. And we always have some issues with that, even though we have Pitch Perfect now to help us with that, the fact still remains, we need more groundsman. So, I'm looking into all those areas, because if you want, if you are addressing the whole child, you have to address the whole safety issue, cleanliness, you notice that cleanliness is next to godliness, which is true, you have to address everything that you can think of. So, I intend to do that, and if you notice for the past couple of months, our buildings have been cleaner, because we, I met with all the stakeholders, and they are working together to make sure that the buildings are clean. It's not about them, and it's not about me or anybody else, it's about providing a safe envi, a healthy environment for our kids. So, I am looking at every different aspect. So, the next one I'm going to look at is going to be the painters, because we do need painters. I mean, I have, I have them a lot in, um, in Parker, because Parker needs some good loving, and they have been doing that over there with the painting. And then I moved them to Graham, then I moved them to this place, and I keep moving them, but I don't have enough folks to paint. So, I'm taking it step by step and making sure that every request is a legitimate request.
So, I have an IT question. Were we able to retrieve all the work orders that the custodians submitted prior to Mr., the former facilities person left? He wiped out everything in, in the work orders? So, were we able to retrieve everything?
Are you talking about school due?
Yeah.
I don't know the answer to that.
Well, can you retrieve stuff that, that was?
I have to get IT to see if they can be of help for us, because it is an IT question. I'm not sure of anything being wiped out.
Yeah, he admitted it.
I know that when something is finished.
No, 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 no. He wiped out stuff, he admitted it. He sat up there and said he, he wiped everything out of the, oh, he's here! Don't, don't, come on up here! I didn't see him, he's, I couldn't see him from where I'm sitting. Who is that, Mr. Ramirez? Yeah, Mr. Maria, can you, can you retrieve stuff that was, that was deleted or wiped out from school due?
Hold on, I can check. Can we go back?
There's some backup records?
Let me check.
Okay, would you, and let us know? Because that could, you know, you have a lot of stuff that was, that was requested and was wiped off from the previous facilities person.
2017.
No, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry. What'd you say?
I looked recently at some stuff that went back to 2017.
No, this was more, it was more recent, yeah.
I'm saying, I looked back that far, in one particular item.
Okay, I guess. So, yeah, can you let us know sometime? Thank you.
I can also contact the head. That one should.
Okay. All right, thank you.
May I just ask if, uh, because it's, I don't, there's the cleaners, I just want to clarify from the conversation before, the cleaners, obviously, they go to HR, and then I guess they get interviewed by the bill, by the principals as well. Is that the same with the painters and each position above that, or no?
Yes, they do the same thing.
Okay.
Because they have to work together, because you don't want to send somebody to somebody's building and it's a problem, you know, so.
But the painters. The painters are all over, I think the painters, the painters are. I don't think they. The painters will go, are interviewed with facilities, is what she was saying. I think the only thing, only ones that are interviewed by the principals are the cleaners. Is that right?
Yes, what, what we do.
Cleaners, custodians, head custodians.
But we also include principals in on it, because they might know something.
Or the painters?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Right.
So, I think, is that anything else?
So, just a question, so, I know you're going to be putting out, putting out for cleaners? Will you be putting out for painters as well, or just?
Sure, yes.
Okay.
I think she said she was going to look at the budget.
Right.
Okay, based upon the budget.
I know it's 10 cleaners, I sign off on for today.
Thank you.
Are they per diems or they permanent?
I think they start as per diems.
Yeah, I think they start as per diems.
After, I think, 120 days or 130 days in position?
No, there are two separate positions. I didn't see the posting yet, but either we hire as per diems, and per diems are the equivalent of like a substitute teacher, right? So, they cover when someone's out on workers' comp, FMLA, vacation, sick, or we hire probationary, and they're probationary for 26 weeks, and then they become permanent employees.
Right. I'm doing per diem, because I'm not sure if I need all 10.
Okay.
So, I'm doing per diem first, and if I need all the 10, then they become permanent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then they apply, they're interviewed for a probationary position, because some people think because they've been a per diem something, that they're entitled and they are automatic hire, which is not the case. And we cannot use per diems more than 120 days. At 119, we have to separate with them.
Well, you have to hire them permanently?
Yes, that's part of that same clause that said we had to have a compact, that 1999 ruling that made it into the contract that we have to live by.
You say that's a union contract?
It was something, it was a decision that made it into their contract in 1999.
Because you found it and you worked on it.
No, they found it.
Oh, they found it. You brought in a lot of people that have been per diem for a long period of time.
Yes, summer of 2020, we hired, I think, 15 per diems.
So, is that it, everyone? Any other questions, comments?
Actually, just a question, because now I'm a little confused. So, if you get hired as a per diem, does that rule you out from ever getting hired as a?
No.
Oh, because it sounds, almost sounds like they're mutually exclusive of one another. Okay.
It just, it takes a longer time to get to probationary period.
Got it.
Because I want to make sure that I do need them, you know, before I do.
Okay, so, we are at the end of our meeting?
Yes. Can I have a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing history of a particular person or corporation?
Motion.
Motion.
Second. Okay.
Okay.
Aye.
All those, yeah. All, questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, oppose? Abstain?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yes.
Motion carries.
So, we won't be returning?
No, we are going to return, it's just that one thing that we need to fix now.
We'll open the door, right?
We can open, yeah.
We can open the door.
Yeah, we can do it.
We'll go back into.
We'll go open the door.
We should only be, how long, 10, 15 minutes? Maybe at 30 minutes, just to give us, that's it.
You know exactly.
Marcy.
Pardon if you had to worry about why we're in there.
Okay.